Good evening. Thank you for joining us this evening. The regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Socorro ISD is being called to order. Today's date is July 25, 2017, and the time is 6:02. Tonight's Pledge of Allegiance is going to be led by Julia Castillo, a senior at America's High School. If you will all please stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Julia. Okay. We will proceed next with item number three, Superintendent's comments. Dr. Espinoza?
Yes, Vice President Nakara, members of the board. August 2 is Trustee Hector Gonzalez' special day. So, we'd like to be the first to wish him a very happy birthday on behalf of Team SISD. Now, Mr. Gonzalez, age is strictly a case of mind over matter, so if you don't mind, it doesn't matter, Mr. Gonzalez. So, there you go, Trustee Gonzalez. Enjoy your special day.
Thank you.
We have many, many new members to our elite leadership team, so it gives me great pleasure to welcome all of them this evening. So, when I call your name, please stand to be recognized. We'll start off with the new principal of Chester Jordan Elementary, Ms. Maribel Pidón. Ms. Pidón, right. Mr. Jesse Sepulveda, he is the principal at Socorro ISD's new elementary school, which will be named at a later date. Mr. Sepulveda, please stand. New principal at Enzer Middle School, Ms. Lisa Estrada. This gentleman is coming back. He is returning. New principal at Socorro Middle School, Mr. Mauro Guerrero. New Assistant Principal at Walter Clark Middle School, Ms. Frenda Cerda Gerardo, please Ms. Arelly Mesa Jessiman is our new Assistant Principal at Chester Jordan. Ms. Lou Sarriano, new Assistant Principal at Desert Wind. Mr. Steven Fernandez, our new Assistant Principal at Eldorado High School. And last, but definitely not least, we have new principal at Lujan Chavez, Ms. Belén Castillo. Congratulations to all of y'all. Are gonna have a huge impact in your school, so congratulations. Our Socorro ISD convocation was this morning and this afternoon at Eastlake High School. And let me tell you what a huge, huge success it was. You know, the excitement of all of our employees coming back and the enthusiasm by Team SISD just filled up the Eastlake Gymnasium, and it was evident that everyone is ready to start another successful school here in the Socorro Independence School District. We're all eager and excited to welcome our students on their first day of school, which will be this coming Monday, July 31. And as we begin another school year, I would like to take this opportunity to thank our awesome board members for their commitment to our school district and our student success. So, thank you so much, board members, for your support. Let's give them a round of applause. Also, want to thank our amazing, and you know, I spoke to them this morning and this afternoon, our amazing teachers, our district leaders, our staff, and entire community for working as a team to ensure that every single student succeeds in SISD. So, go Team SISD. That concludes my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza, and congratulations to all of our new administrators. Okay. We will move on with item number four, Board Honors. Mr. Escobar.
Good evening, Vice President Nakara, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Espinoza. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you'll please step down to receive our honorees. Our first recognition is in honor of an Eldorado High School student who won the 2017 El Paso Young Designers Competition. The contest provides recognition to students for creative design, successful problem-solving, and craftsmanship in preparing architectural drawings and three-dimensional models. Congratulations to Gerardo Aguilar. He is accompanied by his teacher, Luisa Valenzuela. If we can please have the two of you back up front for a photo with the board and superintendent. And just a quick note, as they're gathering for this photo, that all of the pictures taken by our district photographer, Mr. Largo, will be posted on the district website. There's a photo or camera icon on the bottom right-hand corner of the webpage, and on that site you will find free, high-resolution downloads of these photos. Congratulations once again. Next, we will recognize the Eldorado High School Robotics Team for doing an outstanding job representing their school and Team SISD last school year. They were the only El Paso team to advance to the FTC UIL Robotics State Championship, where they were among the best four teams in the state. The Aztecs competed and excelled in 15 competitions in Texas, New Mexico, and Kentucky, which is the most competitions of any high school in the region. Among those contests were the Best Robotics Competition, the FTC Competition, VEX Robotics Competition, STEAM Fiesta 2017, and FRC Robotics Competition. In addition, the team also volunteered hundreds of hours to foster awareness and interest in science, technology, engineering, and math among people of all ages. Congratulations to these outstanding students. They are, yes, please. Brian Hernandez. David Wareka. Diego Sanchez. Felipe Carlos. Hector Durán. Joel Cardozo. Julio Alvarado. Kevin Estrada. Luis Durán. Mariana Sigala. Francisco Santiago Esteban. He's an assistant coach from Texas A&amp;M, another assistant coach from UTEP, Jesús Wareka. Also assistant coach from UTEP, Leo Mercado. We have three special presentations this evening. First, we have two SISD administrators who were recognized by the Region 19 Texas Association of Secondary School Principals, or TASP, for earning the Region 19 Outstanding Assistant Principal of the Year and Outstanding Principal of the Year awards, respectively. The two Team SISD administrators were nominated by their peers and a selection committee for exemplary performance and outstanding leadership in secondary education. Congratulations to Region 19 TASP Assistant Principal of the Year, Mr. Brandon Rios. Congratulations once again. Next, we recognize two SISD schools who earned 2017 National Excellence in Urban Education Awards from the National Center for Urban School Transformation. America's and Eastlake High School were two of only 27 campuses in the nation to be recognized for achieving impressive academic results and meeting rigorous criteria, including high achievement, orderless curriculum, excellent instruction, and enthusiastic student engagement. Eastlake High School won the Silver Award, and America's High School was presented with a Bronze Award. Congratulations to these amazing schools. Representing each campus, we have their leadership teams. From America's High School, we have Assistant Principal Veronica Reyes. Representing Eastlake High School, we have Assistant Principals Jennifer Ávila. Fred Gómez. Analia Jansen. Edgar Ponse. Student Activities Director Kelly Atkins. For our final special presentation this evening, it is with great pleasure that I introduce an exceptional group of educators who have dedicated many years of service to Team SISD and its students, our 2017 retirees. The retiring employees will receive a personalized photo collage to commemorate their time in the district and a lifetime activities pass to enter sporting events for free from here on out. It is a privilege to recognize our retirees. These outstanding individuals have been vital members of Team SISD and loyal educators of our children. During their time in SISD, they have educated thousands of students, offered guidance and support, and led the path to endless opportunities for our children. We appreciate their longtime commitment to Team SISD and wish them well during their retirement. Our first recognition is for Rafael Amaro from Police Services. Mr. Amaro has been a member of Team SISD for 17 years. After retirement, he plans to travel, visit his children, and work part-time at his church. Next, we have Grace Barrientos from Loma Verde Elementary. Ms. Barrientos has been with the district for 15 years. She says one of her most special memories is being a part of a selected group of people Next, we have Michelle Albe Barton, former principal and Human Resources Director. She's been a member of Team SISD for 21 years. She shows no sign in slowing down as she plans to work part-time as an educational consultant Next, we have Eva Benavides from Benito Martinez Elementary. Mrs. Benavides has been with the district for 31 years. She proudly opened Benito Martinez Elementary School and was their school secretary for Next, we have Guadalupe Cerda from Escondrias Elementary. Ms. Cerda has been with the district for 11 years. She says she'll always have a special place in her heart for the teachers, students, and Our next recognition is for Barbara Cobos, a teacher at Socorro High School. Ms. Cobos worked in SISD for 30 years. One of her greatest memories is her students competing at the national level for Business Next, we have Fred Dorick, a special education teacher at Lujan Chavez Elementary School. Mr. Dorick has been a member of Team SISD for 27 years. He hopes his colleagues remember him as someone who did an excellent job in caring for and working with his special needs students.
Yes. You all need to know that this man was my mentor teacher when I first started teaching
Next, we have Ms. Linda Aynton from the Parent Volunteer Program. Ms. Aynton has been a member of Team SISD for 13 years. One of her most special memories will be playing Mrs. Santa Claus alongside her husband and visiting with students during the holiday season. Ms. Howell has been with SISD for 14 years. She will miss teaching, her amazing colleagues, and her students. Next, we have Gloria Ituriaga from Jane Hambrick School. She feels honored to have taught the children of her former students, work alongside her brother, and have her three sons attend Hambrick while she worked there. Next is Special Education Instructor Joe Morales. Mr. Morales has dedicated 31 years to the district. He remembers coming to SISD to apply for a job and then signing the contract the very same day. He started teaching the next day, and the rest, as they say, is history.
Mr. Morales also was one of the teachers that helped me my very first year teaching a little bit in this school, so blame them.
Next, we have Carmen Palacios from Weiko Elementary School. Ms. Palacios says one of her fondest memories was moving a classroom's Alf on a shelf while she tidied up the classroom. Needless to say, she not only fooled the students, but the teachers as well. Congratulations once again. Next, we have Yolanda Rangel from Sierra Vista Elementary School. Ms. Rangel has been in the district for 36 years. Her fondest memory in her teaching career is having been selected as a Campus Teacher of the Year at two different campuses. What an amazing honor. Next, we have Patricia Rominski from the Special Education Department. Ms. Rominski has dedicated 30 years to Team SISD. She's looking forward to visiting her oldest son in Chicago, riding horses with her youngest son in Colorado, and just being grandma to her grandson here in El Paso. Next, we have Rachel Thomas from Myrtle Cooper Elementary School. Ms. Thomas has been a member of Team SISD for 27 years. As a Dallas Cowboys' season ticket holder, she plans on attending more games without worrying about lesson plans or grading papers. Congratulations. Our next recognition is for Celia Tumi, a teacher from Ernesto Serna School. She's been with the district for 15 years. She plans to work part-time as a substitute teacher two to three days out of the week, volunteer in her community, and travel to new places. And our final recognition is for Ms. Joyce Zarowski, former principal and human resources director. Ms. Zarowski has dedicated 38 years to the Socorro Independent School District. With her, absolutely, with her many hats, she hopes to be remembered as a caring, empathetic person who worked hard to empower growth in others throughout the district. Empathetic, what did I say? Empathetic. So on behalf of us all in the Socorro Independent School District, we wish you the best in your retirement and appreciate your dedication, commitment, and unwavering support to Team SISD. Trustees, this concludes our recognitions for the evening.
But do we need to call her? To see if she needs anything?
Yeah, we'll talk to her. Oh, I thought you were going to call her name.
No, 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 no. If y'all want to see what her major malfunction is. You can move over. It is hot. Take your shoe off and push down. Oh, okay. Thank you. I'll let you know. Oh, my gosh. Okay, guys. Does it smell good? Okay. Should I go ahead or give them more time?
I'll give it a little bit more.
Okay.
About 30 more seconds.
Okay. Have it all? You're good.
Do it. We're ready.
Okay, we're going to continue with our agenda. Next on number six is open forum. At this time, we had no one sign up to speak, so we will move on to number seven, district reports, facilities report. Mr. Eington?
Good evening, Vice President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Tonight, I'm going to give you a facility report. I do not have any slides, so we'll be referring to, "We were at Eastlake all day today." My secretary was helping run it, so she couldn't put it together. So on page 10 of your board booklet is Socorro High School HVAC upgrade. We are finally moving along with this project. This project has been a little slow to come to fruition, but we have advertised and we will be taking the bids here in the next couple of weeks and be coming to the board probably in August with a price on that, and then I can give you a better timeline and construction completion date. But with all of the work we're seeing in the area, labor forces and things, and engineers and architects and everybody else are busy, so we are finally getting this project out on the street to get it bid. The next one is the new elementary school. There is some agenda items later on this evening that has to do with a package that we would allow us to start to bid the earthwork package. We will be presenting that later on, as I stated. Looking forward to also in August, if the timeline holds, we will bring the rest of the GMP to you at that time, so we know what the total amount. We have done this before where we've done two separate, or taken bids on early packages on some of our earlier projects years ago in order to get the bids in and to get our contractor working on the site and stuff. So this is nothing unusual. We've done that before on other projects. But by August, we will know the total price of that facility when we bring the Second Amendment to the contract. We also will be, hopefully with PR, scheduling a groundbreaking ceremony, probably sometime in September, once we acquire the property and get construction on it. So we'll have a groundbreaking ceremony to look forward to. The next project on page 12 is Afita Chavez and Mountwood Middle School Outside Air Unit Upgrades. This project is moving along fast. We are actually working in Afita Chavez portion of it. The duct installation and demolition is complete, and now we're in the process of installing the ductwork for the new air units. And we are pleased with this project because it seems to be moving, and the contractor has been working real well with the campuses and stuff. We will go into another mode of construction. Once the students come back, we'll start working the evenings and stuff like we did prior to the break of our summer intercession. And we've done that before in a lot of our projects. The next project is Myrtle Cooper and Robert Rojas Kitchen Upgrades. We had a big meeting, when was it, last week? I think it was on Friday with the contractor to iron out some issues. This project has been kind of a little bit slow, but we have, Ms. Janowski is working with the campuses. We'll be able to provide hot foods as we did towards the end of last year. We were hoping that this project would have been completed by then, but there's been some issues with Rojas, with the plumbing inspector, with the city of Socorro not having a plumbing inspector, so we had to work around that. And then with Cooper on a lift station that we have to replace and restore. But we feel like that it should be after the meeting. Last week, we've come to understand and we've come to agreement that this project will be moving a lot, a lot better than what it has been. And I believe the final project in your book is on the 14th. And what I did is I put this in there. It's kind of a new furniture retrofit for all of the Socorro feeder schools, all the elementary school and the middle schools will be receiving new furniture for their classroom furniture, not their offices or not their library, but this is classroom furniture. And, you know, it's the new collaborative furniture that we discussed at the end of last year. We took it in front of AdHoc, and AdHoc approved it, and so we're finalizing that. We're just missing a couple of pieces, but it shouldn't affect anything with the start of school on Monday. And I believe that completes my report. If there's any questions.
Yes, sir, Mr. E.
In reference to the El Fida Chavez Mountwood Air, on the progress up to date, there's a number of things. They're 95% complete, and the mechanical and so forth has been, and electrical is in progress. El Fida Chavez has been demoed, but you're recording 18% completion. Is that because of the two schools put together, or should it be further along?
Yeah, it should be further along, and the 18% completion is just based on their pay application on what they have billed us to date. So it's much further along than that. Yes, sir.
So since we're going to move to working at night, I know on weekends too, what is the projected end date?
I will have to get that, and I'll get that for you.
No problem. I'll ask you later. Okay.
Does anyone have any other questions? Mr. Eington, I have a question on the Myrtle Cooper and Robert Rojas Kitchen Upgrades. How will lunches be served when school starts?
They have a temporary serving line that we installed at the end of last year for the couple of weeks in May, I believe it was, and they'll be utilizing those, so we will still have that in service in order to serve them.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Eington.
Thank you.
Our next district report will be 7B, Facilities Advisory Committee Update. Mr. Escobar?
Yes, ma'am. We have Mr. Robert Oliver as our chair for our Facilities Advisor Committee, who will be presenting the update.
Good evening. Dr. Espinoza, Vice President Nahara. It's a pleasure to be here and present you with an update on where we're at with the Facilities Advisory Committee. So on behalf of the 2017 Facilities Advisory Committee, I am very pleased to be here and give you an update on where we're at with activities and timelines for the AFC. The committee consisted of 30 members representing a diverse group of, including parents, employees, volunteers, business people, elected officials, taxpayers as a whole, and the activities of the facility have been in line with the charge set forth by the Board of Trustees in our organizing charter. To date, we have held five productive meetings. The first gathering served as an orientation overview of the district's facilities' history and demographics. and overview of the district's facilities history and demographics. Over the next four meetings, we toured five district high schools, one elementary multipurpose room, the operations and technology support center on Tanton Road, and took a bus trip through the community to view the fast-growing areas. Each meeting has included an overview of conditions and needs of the facilities assessed in the 2016 Facility Assessment, Land Analysis, and Demographic Study. In addition, we have reviewed the needs identified by the 2010 FAC that were not included in the final bond of 2011 proposal. And we've also looked at other emerging items identified by the staff. All questions from members are taken, addressed, and committee feedback is noted. Adding to the opening, from the very beginning, transparent process is what we're looking at. All summaries of the committee meetings are shared with the committee and posted on the district's website. We hold open public meetings weekly to be able to assess what those, what those needs are. We're looking at having a open public meeting on Thursday, July 27th, to share information regarding our activities and findings with the community and get their feedback. With the input from the community at large and our assessment at district facilities and growth over the past six weeks, we will complete our work as previously outlined and submitted in the final report to the board. We'll get that to you all August 7th, 2017. We have been thoroughly impressed with the complete team effort in successfully completing Bond 2011. Promises made, promises kept. Stretching bond savings to complete additional projects without burning taxpayers and proactively studying and adjusting boundaries to ensure that Socorro ISD maximizes the use of existing facilities before continuing to build. It is apparent that the district staff, schools, and community are working collaboratively to ensure that the district provides all students with the best possible learning environment while being responsible to the taxpayers. I would personally like to thank Socorro ISD Administration and the Board of Trustees for all their hard work and dedication, including staff who worked with us in this endeavor from the very beginning, being very accommodating and supporting the activities of the FAC. We look forward to completing the work of the committee and fulfilling our charge throughout the development of a five-year plan that will proactively and equitably accommodate growth and meet the needs of existing campuses and auxiliary facilities so the district can continue to improve upon the endless opportunities provided to every SISD student. I'd also like to take this time to thank some of our committee members. So I have Mr. Ayub that also came to represent and, and like to recognize him for coming out to join us today and, and support me in giving you this update. Thank you, sir. And I'd like to, at this time, open it up. If you have any questions or any feedback you'd like for me to take back to the, to the committee, I can do so.
Does anyone have questions?
No question. I do have feedback. Several of us have sat in on, on your committee meeting to, to listen in and join on some of the tours. I gotta tell you, from our perspective, very impressed with the questions your committee has, the attentiveness to detail that they've demonstrated. They're working very, very hard on a very tight timeframe to get us some feedback. And so I think what I've seen is a very well organized and, and hardworking group working.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez, and the members of your committee. Thank you.
Mr. Nahara?
Mr. Alvarez, I just want to say thank you, and please extend my appreciation to all the committee members. You know, certainly, it takes a lot, a lot of time and dedication, and you're taking time away from, you know, being at home with your families, being at home, doing the things that you probably should be doing, you know. And as they sit there undone, y'all have dedicated time to come to the district. And so certainly, you know, it's easy to complain, but it's completely different to come in and help when you're asked to be helped. And every single one of the committee members has done that. So thank you very much. We certainly appreciate it. And, you know, couldn't undertake something like this alone. So thank you.
Well, sure do. Thank you. You lead by example, and we do follow your lead. And thank you for your commitment. Ultimately, my committee and what you all do, it's about the kiddos. It's about ensuring that they have the best environment and they have the best facilities out there to make sure that their, their opportunities are equitable throughout the entire district. And I see that that's everybody's goal. And it brings me back. This is the second time I do this. Somebody, Mr. Ayub, I think you said I was a little crazy and maybe you need some medication for coming back. However, it brings some importance to it. And I, I think when we meet with, with the community, I always stress that. And I always welcome parents to come back and, and take a part of their students' education and take part of the experience because I think we offer something that a lot of us didn't have when we were younger. And, and I think that our students can benefit from it, and, and that's our future, and that's what we're here for. And again, thank you for what you do, and we follow your lead. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. We appreciate it very much. Thank you. We will move on to consent agenda. Does anyone have any items to pull at this time?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Ayub, a second by Mr. Nahara. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Okay. Number nine, new business. A, consider approval of Bain's General Contractors, guaranteed maximum price.
I'd like to make a motion that item 9A be moved into executive session.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Ayub, a second by Mr. Nahara to move item 9A in new business to executive session. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And item is moved into executive session, which we are at now. This meeting is to be closed for consultation with legal counsel for discussion regarding status and possible resolution of OCR matter involving PDL, discussion and review of Level 3 appeal filed by HY and MT, to discuss personnel and real estate matters, to conduct evaluations of internal auditors, curriculum and instruction, and finance, to consider administrative recommendations for assistant principal positions at Herschel and Twine School, Myrtle Cooper Elementary School, and Socorro High School under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. The time is 7 o'clock.
Thank you.
Waiting. Waiting.
I text. Did you see what I texted?
I haven't seen it, no.
Cause he texted.
Okay. See, you blew it. Thanks. Okay. The time is 9:30. We are back from executive session. We will address item 9, new business that was moved to executive first. Consider approval of Bain's General Contractors.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Ayub and a second by Mr. Nahara. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. 11A, discussion and possible action regarding resolution of OCR matter involving PDL. Mr. Blanco?
Thank you, Vice President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Steve Blanco, legal counsel for the district. I gave you an update on our ongoing discussions with the Office of Civil Rights involving this matter. I'd ask, and we'd entertain a motion from the board to allow us to continue our discussions with OCR on the revised terms as we discussed in closed session.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Nahara. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item 11B, discussion and possible action regarding Level 3 appeal filed by HY. Mr. Blanco?
Thank you. Again, this, this matter was first brought to you at the board meeting last month. At this meeting, you had the opportunity to ask questions and review and discuss it amongst yourselves. It's my understanding the board wants to take some action on this, so we would entertain a motion for that.
Motion to grant the grievance in part with removal of the memo.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nahara and a second by Mr. Gonzalez to grant the grievance in part by removing the memo. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item 11C, discussion and possible action regarding Level 3 appeal filed by MT. Mr. Blanco?
Thank you, Vice President Nahara. Again, this is another matter that was first received by the board last month. And at this meeting tonight, in closed session, you were allowed to ask questions and review and discuss it amongst yourselves. At this time, I understand the board would like to make a motion on this as well.
Motion to deny.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nahara, a second by Ms. Rodriguez to deny the grievance. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And motion carries. 11D, consider approval of evaluation of internal auditors. That would be me. D1, curriculum and instruction.
Can we make a motion to approve both?
Or individual?
Or individual. Separately, okay. Motion, oh, go ahead, sir.
Motion to approve the evaluation of the curriculum and instruction internal auditor as discussed in executive.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Nahara and a second by Ms. Rodriguez to accept the evaluation of the curriculum and instruction.
Internal auditor.
Internal auditor. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And motion carries. Item D2, finance.
Motion to approve the evaluation of the finance internal auditor as discussed in executive session.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nahara and a second by Mr. Gonzalez to accept the valuation of the finance internal auditor. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item 11E, consider approval of administrative recommendations. Dr. Espinoza?
Yes, Vice President Nahara and members of the board. At this time, administration recommends Ms. Elida Gómez to assume the roles and responsibilities as assistant principal at Antwine Elementary.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Nahara to approve Elida Gómez as the assistant principal for Herschel and Twine School. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Myrtle Cooper Elementary.
Yes, Vice President Nahara, members of the board. At this time, administration recommends Ms. Nora Macias to assume the roles and the responsibilities as assistant principal at Myrtle Cooper Elementary.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Ayub and a second by Mr. Nahara to approve Nora Macias as the Myrtle Cooper Elementary Assistant Principal. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And Socorro High School.
Yes, Vice President Nahara, members of the board. At this time, administration recommends Mr. Michael Beltran to assume the roles and the responsibilities as assistant principal at Socorro High School.
Motion to approve? Second.
And I have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez and a second by Mr. Nahara to approve Michael Beltran as the assistant principal for Socorro High School. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Congratulations to these assistant principals. And if there is no further business before this board, we are adjourned. The time is 9:35.